All right, let's go ahead and start our work session. First one, I believe, for January 2021. We'll start off by conducting roll call.
Sorry. Sorry. It sounds like it's without it.
Commissioner Sana Gregory.
I'm sorry, I was talking to Will. I'm here, I'm here.
Commissioner Demont Davis.
Present.
Commissioner Felicia Franklin. She's on the screen.
Her computer's turned on over there, but we didn't know if she was coming here or she was.
Okay. All right, Commissioner Gail Hambrick. All right, let the record reflect those who have notified that they are here, and that's Commissioner Davis and Commissioner Gregory. Let's go ahead and start. Are there any commissioners that would like to speak about any of, on the, any other preliminary items for the January 19th Board of Commissioners meeting? All right, well, let's go to our first presentation by, I think it's Finance. There you go, okay.
Mr. Chairman, while we're doing that, I'm gonna try to reach Commissioner Hambrick, because I know she was one of them that wanted, I mean, I know she actually wanted to hold one of those items, so let me make sure she's okay.
Okay. But we're gonna proceed on with the, uh...
Go ahead and wait.
Yeah, with the, she's gonna chime in. And, uh, nothing keeps us from bringing something back if we need to. So go ahead, please proceed.
Okay, good evening, Mr. Chairman and Vice Chair and Commissioners. The Chairman requested that the Finance Staff prepare a presentation with information showing how elected officials and constitutional officers' salaries are set each year. Our resident expert, Accounting Coordinator Kim Booth, will be presenting this evening. She's been performing these calculations for over 10 years and knows all of the idiosyncrasies involved in calculating these salaries. She will be discussing the three methods, um, how salaries are established, along with an example on how certain actions impact the salaries and the cost of the county, and answer any questions you may have. I'll be sharing the presentation with you after the meeting this evening. I'll email it to you after the meeting this evening. Um, Kim Booth.
Okay, so today I'm gonna talk about...
You gotta speak, speak a little louder for me.
Okay, I'm gonna talk about calculating salaries today for elected officials and constitutional officers. Go to the next slide, please. There's three basic ways that an elected official or constitutional officer can be, their salary can be set. There is state law, which is set at the Gold Dome. It's set for a specific position, and it's across the board for the whole state of Georgia. Anybody that holds that position, that's what the law says, that they have to be paid. There's local law. We have our local constituents that are, our local delegates that are at the Capitol that may pass laws for us specifically in Clayton County. So it would be just our specific position that they are passing those local laws to effect. And then we have county resolutions, which are passed here by our county. State law will always set a uniform pay plan for elected officials. They set and approve any of our annual cost of living adjustments that are paid for elected officials. They are mandated by the state that we pay to the elected officials, and they set those percentages. They also set the maximum percentage for longevity. Even though there may be longevity for a specific position, they may say it's 5% for every four-year term that you serve, but they can set that and say, you can't go over 30%. Generally, what has happened in the past and continues to happen as we see, as the years go by, those maxims get increased. But they're not increased at the same level for every position, so it's set specifically for a position. And it is for a full term served. So if someone takes over in a term that is not completed, and they start a term, even if it's two months into the term, they would not have the benefit of a full four-year term until they have actually served a, what is constituted as a four-year term for that position. So they do not get the longevity if it's just a partial term. Their term is based on whatever their position is, so you have some positions that are two-year terms, some are four-year terms, so it is set by whatever the term is for that position. There is a cap on percentages, like I said. It varies by position. It's not set for one or the other. They set it every year. You know, they may change it. You have to verify that nothing has increased when it comes to that next slide. So sometimes they make a decision to increase salaries, like Superior Court judges' salaries that they did a few years ago. When they make that increase, they realize that a lot of counties pay a lot of their other elected officials based on the Superior Court judges' salaries. So when they don't want to impact and cost us money on a local level, they may say, as they did with the Accountability Court, the extra $6,000 apiece, that they decided to pay the Superior Court judges for Accountability Courts. They said, if you're using the Superior Court judges' salary in local calculations, you are not to use this $6,000 Accountability Court in that calculation. That allowed them to give an increase to Superior Court judges, but without hurting us on a, on a local level. They do set maximum county supplements. As in the case of the Superior Court judges, they have set that $50,000 per year is the maximum that a, that we could pay for a supplement for them. Right now, our Superior Court judges are at the maximum that we're allowed to pay in addition to their regular salaries. Unless the state changes that, we have no recourse to go outside what the state law allows us to do. The, go back a minute. Okay, so the other thing is, no matter what rules are settled at local law and/or county resolution, we can never fall below what the state mandates. Most of the time, the state law will have COLAs and longevity included in their pay plans. Local law and/or county resolutions may not do that. So we, at that point, have to calculate the state-mandated way and whatever the local and/or county resolution is. If the state way is higher, we are required by law to pay the state amount. Elected officials, they set their pay up to be in 12 equal monthly installments. They set everything up to be that way. So like even our judges that we pay into the pension plan, like JRS, they actually want us to give them 12 equal monthly amounts that we are paying to the judges. So when we pay outside that guideline, it, it affects us in other ways. Okay, next slide. Legislation that's set by the county's local delegation usually are set under Senate bills and/or House bills. The Senate bills and House bills may set a higher rate than set by state law, but you have to calculate all salaries by all active law, all active laws that are in effect, because, as you'll see in a sample that I'm gonna have here shortly for you, there may come a time when, right now, the law is, this law is higher, but as time goes on and people get longevity and all, it will cause this way to now be, be higher. Doesn't make this law go away, so it still stays in play, and we still have to calculate it, because if a new person comes on board that no longer has longevity, now this way's gonna go back to being the highest. Okay, next slide. County resolutions. So county resolutions can set salaries, they can set supplements. They should show specifically, though, how they want us to handle the COLAs, longevity, and, and supplements. So if, if a, if the county decides they want to pay an elected official a greater amount, they let us know in that resolution how they want us to handle the COLAs. Is this amount their total amount, or do they want us to include COLAs? Are we to include longevity? Or is this the grand total of what they're going to get, and that's it? We also have a need, when we have a new resolution that comes along, or even a new state law, or, you know, local law that comes along, it's very important if we can repeal the original law, because sometimes they get kind of confused when there's too many of them out there, and, you know, you've got, this one takes precedence, or whether this one takes precedence. So it's very clean if we can do away with and repeal the old one and set up a new one. It makes it a lot easier for us in our calculations. This is just an example of one that was set up. This was set up for the sheriff, and it was set up that he was to receive a total annual salary of $143,933. This was a House bill that was set up by our local delegation. It says that this salary is to include any supplements, additional compensation, which are pursuant to state law or county ordinance, which are being received on January 1 of 2017. Now, having said that, if we wanted to add additional supplements to him that were dated after this, we could do so because of the way the, the law was written. But in this case, because of how much they set the salary to be, and our sheriff has been serving multiple terms now, he's getting very close to, when you calculate his state calculation, go to the next screen. When you calculate his state calculation, right now, his state calculation comes to $140,829.58 versus this $143. So that tells you, we're very close to him, the state way, becoming the higher of the two. It would not take a lot for that to happen. Go to the next screen. So if in 2022, they gave a 3% COLA to the, in the state of Georgia, and we had to calculate the sheriff's pay and added that 3% COLA in, it would now mean that, based on the calculation for the state way, he should receive $144,969, which would now take him above the $143, as was set by the House bill. Now where this comes into play, though, is, the House bill doesn't go away, because if our sheriff no longer, you know, he, he serves his term and then he leaves, and we have a new sheriff, well, he's not gonna have all this longevity that this sheriff has, so the $143 would come back into play and be how we would have to pay. So we always have to keep abreast of all the, all the legislation that sits out there, so that we can compare them. Longevity increases. Anytime you're trying to compare pay plan to pay plan, you really have to take out the longevity to compare the base salaries and the supplements that are being paid, because that longevity, if you've got someone who's been in the position quite a while, you know, it can skew it, you know, $25,000 very easily. So if you're trying to compare the two, it's best to pull the longevity out, compare the base and the supplements, to get a realistic view of what that salary is for an incoming person, so that you can actually compare the, make a, a good comparison between the two and, and get a true salary. Okay, so in new legislation, things to consider. Provide clarity to ensure accurate pay calculations. Is this new legislation, is it, is it a supplement, or is it really replacing the other pay plan? Are you wanting to add to the state amount and give them an additional amount? Or are you wanting to say, let's not pay them the state way, let's pay them based on this? So that's really important to set. I know we've had some issues in the past with some situations where they called something a supplement when it really was a replacement pay plan. And then another question that has to always be answered is, should COLAs and longevity be added to the new pay, or is it already included in what y'all are asking us to pay? Because I have to, you know, make that determination. I have to get with legal to make sure that I'm paying them in the correct way. Also, if the salary is based on another position, it's important that they, very specific, are they to be paid on the base salary alone? Are they to be paid on the base salary and supplements, or base salary, supplements, and COLA? The one thing that is never included, ever, even when you're paying on another position, is longevity. Because that longevity is subject to change. This person leaves, and a new person comes in, the longevity goes away. So that's one thing that is, that is always gonna be changing with a specific person. So longevity should never be included in any calculations. Any questions or comments?
All right. Thank you for that thorough presentation. Are there any questions from board members?
Uh, yes, I got a couple of questions.
Okay.
One, is the salary supplement the same for officials all over the state? So if you use example of the sheriff, would it be the same in rural Georgia versus metro Atlanta?
Okay, well, most of your salary calculations that the state has are based on your number of people in your, in your county.
Population.
Yeah, it is, it's so, so they have a population grid that they use, and it changes, of course, whenever there's been a new census or something that makes those changes. But it can never drop down during a, so if you were to have a census and your numbers dropped in your county, you can never lower someone's salary in that term. It wouldn't change until the beginning of the, the next term.
Okay, thank you. And also, next question. When was the last time, are the supplement and salary, are they calculated every year for all elected officials and constitutional officers?
Yes, I, well, I calculate, every January, I go through, I look at what the ACCG publishes, I go out there and look at any new legislation that has come out, and I make sure if there's been any changes to anything, we, we calculate it every January and July, because that's usually when the changes take place, will either be January 1st or July 1st. So we do calculate it to make sure there haven't been any changes, and if there have been, then we put in a new PA for the elected officials.
And the last question. Are ours being paid off of the state calculations or local Clayton County calculations?
Um, well, y'all actually have a new, um, a new, are you talking about commissioners?
No, no, well, across, across the board, I mean, you can answer for all the officials.
Well, that's a varied answer.
I'm not the...
Yeah, I was gonna say, that's a varied answer. Some of them are based on the state's calculations, some of them are based on local legislation, and some are based on, uh, on resolutions. It depends on...
As far as our constitutional officers and our, our courts?
It is across, it is across the board. It varies, because in some cases, the state way is higher, and in other cases, there may be a county resolution and/or local law that is in play that makes it larger.
Great.
Thank you.
Okay, I have...
Commissioner Hambrick.
No, you can go, go on, I'll, I'll go after you. I'm Hambrick, but I went. Okay, oh no, it's okay, but I just wanted to have you clarify, because I do travel throughout the state, and I do see the salaries of, not just elected officials, but those who work for county governments in general. And so I just want you to clarify your last statement, because your presentation made it seem as if the state itself sets the maximum amount that could be paid for any elected official, but yet and still, you just stated, as Commissioner Davis asked, that there are some, some other jurisdictions where the boards have provided a, a payment to those, which does tend to be higher. Is that what you just stated? Can you verify that, please?
Okay, so the only, the only cap that I have seen since I've been doing this is on the amount that we're allowed to pay the Superior Court judges as far as the supplement amount. They have set a $50,000 maximum for us when it comes to the Superior Court judges' supplement. Now, as far as the elected officials themselves, the, the state has to be, it has to be paid at least the amount the state requires. But other than that, if the local law is written to pay them more, then we will pay them more. If the, if the resolution is set to pay them more, we will pay them more.
Okay, because your presentation, I may have taken it in differently. You know, everybody has different means that they take things in. So when I saw your presentation, I didn't get that from the presentation as the statement that you're making now, and I just wanted you to clarify that, because as we just saw most recently in Douglas County, that that board made a different decision. So I think that's important for folks to have and to know, because a lot of times what we're dealing with, whether it's us or anybody else, as elected officials, they work directly for the people. Whereas when we're dealing with other government employees, they are hired specifically by one person or by the board, and to be quite often, it doesn't help with the economic sustainability of a county, because I often find a lot of people may not necessarily come inside the county other than to work. And so I think that we need to make sure that folks heard you when you said that, because your presentation was not clear on that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Hambrick.
Hold it, I'm sorry, I didn't realize I was on mute. But who determines supplements, who gets the supplements, and the amount of the supplements?
Um, well, we, we have a couple of county resolutions that have been done. One was done in 2005, and one was done in 2014, and they were set here by our commissioners at the time, and it is on, on record. And it, that, that was set by, by a local resolution. There are some state mandated amounts of supplements that are required to be paid, but most are, most of your, most of your supplements are set at the resolution at the county level.
Uh, do you have, when the last time the commissioners did a supplement for any of the elected officials?
2014.
2014?
Yes, ma'am. You want me to tell you the, I can, I can tell you the number if you'd like.
The DA, right? And, and, and I was about to say, and, and let me know, you're right, who was included in that, in those supplemental payments?
Please, please pick in the mic, so...
Okay, I'm sorry. Uh, okay, so in 2014, they increased the majority of the positions that had supplements here in the county, the ones that we were able to, legal department determined which ones we were, or y'all were allowed to at the time, to increase without causing a problem and conflicting with the state law. And they were increased, all of them were increased at that time.
Okay, when you, oh, I'm sorry.
No, except for the few exceptions that legal said we, that could not be increased. All of them that were getting supplements at the time were increased in that resolution.
Oh, and that was 2014?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Okay, because, uh, some, a couple of months ago, we stirred up something. You know, when we voted to give an increase or a supplement and all, then the next couple of days, we start getting these letters from other elected officials saying, you know, well, you know, I, I wanna supplement, I want, you know. So how do we do that? I mean, and when can we do that? And when can we do it that it will not violate whatever the state is doing? Because it seems like there's some discrepancy, like when you said with the sheriff, that not to go over that, whatever that amount was, that they set back in whatever that date was.
Good evening, Commissioners. So, um, I think your question was, how do we, how do we set the, the supplements?
Right, or how we, how do we determine? Because, you know, when we decide we're gonna do something for the solicitor and all, and then, um, then we got letters and, and all from other, a couple of other elected officials saying, well, you know, I haven't had a supplement, I wanna supplement, kind of thing. So, I mean, how do we do that? We need to get a handle on that.
So, so basically, as, as Kim presented in the, in the presentation, the, the salaries can be set one of three ways, whether it's state salary, that says the minimum that we have to pay. The, um, local delegation can set a salary, and if it's higher than the state minimum, we have to pay that amount. Or if the, if the board decides to set a resolution paying them, then we pay that amount if it's higher. She has to calculate it all ways and pay the higher of the amounts. Um, that's, that's what was shown in the presentation. As far as setting supplements, they can, anybody, they can request a supplement, and it's up to the board to decide if they want to pay that supplement or not. The state gives you that leeway to be able to do that. And if the board feels that it's financially feasible, that we have the money to do it, then you can say yes. If you don't, then you would say no.
Let me ask you a quick question. I know I asked y'all to do assessment as to how all of the elected and constitutional officers pay and supplements were being paid. Are we in line with what the state requires us to do?
Yes, yes, so we are.
And what we have set on the local level?
Yes, so we are.
Are they getting paid basically what they're supposed to?
We, they're either being paid by the state law, which says we have to pay them a minimum amount based on certain criteria, which is in the ACCG guide, or we're paying them by the, um, local law that's set by the delegation, either Senate, a House bill or a Senate bill, or by a resolution that the county has set. For instance, I will use the commissions as an example. You all set your salary by home rule. The state tells us that it's, um, a certain calculation that we have to pay you, so she, she still calculates the other way, the state way, and compares it to what the resolution states when you set through home rule and pay you the higher of the two salaries.
So nobody's been short-changed?
Nobody's been short-changed, no, sir. And, and the instance, I think, we use the sheriffs as an example, because I think one of the letters that we got was from the sheriff's office, and they were asking about the COLA and the longevity. So the COLA and the longevity is only applied on the state method. When they, when you introduce a House bill or a Senate bill that sets a salary, then it states in there that that salary that's set is inclusive of all of those already, so you don't add it on to that. So right now, that particular position's salary, because of longevity, is at, um, 140 with the state, 140?
Oh, 140 with the state.
140 with the state way calculation, it's 143 by the House bill. Um, if the state gives an COLA and that increases, I think she used an example of 3%. Then that would push the state method above the House bill method, so that position would be paid, the higher of those two. Does that make sense?
Okay, Ms. Vivin's?
Yes, ma'am.
So we have a list of which elected officials that we pay the supplements to. I noticed you all said something about you checked with legal to make sure that certain people were included, and some we were not, I guess obligated to pay. Do you all have a list of the ones that we?
I, I do, I have a list. I'm actually gonna send that to you along with the presentation after we finish here. The list that I have compiled, it shows all the positions, not names, but I did the positions, and it shows that, um, if they're county-funded or state-funded. All of the positions are county-funded, with the exception of the DA and the Superior Court judges. We pay a supplement to them, and their base salary is paid by the state. Everybody else is paid by county funds.
Okay, but we still do or have done supplements for those that the county paid?
Yes, ma'am. And, um, as, as Kim stated earlier in the presentation, the maximum amount that we can pay the Superior Court judges is $50,000, and that is set by the state. We can't exceed that amount.
And we're at that level now?
We're at that level now, yes.
Okay, what about with the DA?
The DA, the county can determine the supplement. There's not a maximum. The Superior Court judges is the only supplement that has a cap on it. Any other supplement that you would like to pay any other elected official, you can pay them at whatever rate you want to pay them.
Okay, so I, I, do the state court judges come under the county, or?
Yes, ma'am. The state court judges are paid by the county, they're county-funded, and their salary is a percentage of the Superior Court judge's salary, but their percentages base are, are different based on their, the number of terms or the number of experience, years of experience they have. But Kim would have to explain that part, too. But Kim would have to explain that part to you. Cause I was looking at the list and I noticed that some of the newer judges, they're at a lower percentage and you cap out at ninety-five percent of that salary. You can't go above ninety-five percent of the Superior Court judge's base salary.
Okay, so if the Superior Court judges get an increase from the state or whatever, does that automatically key in for the, uh, state court judges?
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am, it does. Anytime the state gives an increase, um, to the Superior Court judge's base salary, then any other position whose salary is based off of that, that would increase as well.
Does that include the sheriff, solicitor, or DA?
No, ma'am, because they're not based on Superior Court. The only two people, I think there's only two positions, state court judges and the juvenile court judges are tied to the Superior Court judge's, um, salaries.
Okay, not, not the magistrate judge?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Okay. Is Commissioner still speaking? No, no, you can go on, I, I'm, I'm thinking on the next question. And I, I do have another question, but I, I'll wait until after.
Commissioner Franklin.
So, um, I just wanted to go back to, thank you, um, Director Vivins, or, for that. Um, and thank you, Kim, again, for that explanation as well. But I want us to look at it in a holistic, uh, from a holistic standpoint. Cause of what I'm hearing and what we've heard up until now is the fact that the only thing that's a cap is your Superior Court judge and the state court judge's salary are set based upon that Superior Court judge's salary. And then you talked about the supplements. We talked about the last time we got a supplement was twenty fourteen. And I've asked this question before, but I don't know if I got a calculation. So what were the calculations based on when both, I think it was then Chairman Turner, then, um, it might have been, um, then Commissioner Rooks, um, and a couple of other commissioners who voted on that in twenty fourteen? So help those of us who was not here before, understand what was the basis of the calculation of the supplement at that time? Cause I could not see any correlation of, uh, any data that was utilized, um, the formula that was used.
Okay, so.
Come talk in, Jack, thank you, ma'am.
Yes.
I'm sorry. Okay, so what happened back in two thousand and fourteen? Um, there was a local COLA that was given here to county employees. And there were some people that were getting supplements that felt that since they didn't get a COLA from the state, they wanted some kind of increase. So it was, they tried to calculate it as closely as they could and round it to a certain number based on the COLA amount that our county employees were given. They increased the supplements at the time based on that.
So that we ever do that once again? Once we reintroduced the COLA?
No, because normally, because really- Uh, no, no, ma'am, because actually that was kind of outside the guidelines. Normally, the local COLAs have nothing to do with elected officials or anything. It's always the state COLAs that affect the, so, uh, you know, it was, uh, I don't know why they made that concession, I can't explain that, I just know that's what the concession was for.
Right. And the reason I'm saying that, because there was a question asked earlier about people getting shortchange, and I'm just all about data. So if we don't have the proper data at which it was utilized to come up with whatever the payment method was in twenty fourteen that is concrete, that was once again utilized further, then I don't, I'm, I'm wondering, how can we say that we are, how can we stand by that? I don't know that we're not. I'm not saying that anybody is, but I'm just trying to understand, what was the calculations before? Were they utilized since twenty fourteen if that was the basis to be where we are now?
Right, Commissioner, um, so no. The, as, as she was explaining, the, the, um, elected officials who were getting a supplement, they didn't, they normally would get a COLA, those that were getting paid by the state would get an increase, a COLA from the state. The county gave a COLA that year, they did not get a COLA from the state. They hadn't had any increase from, when was the first one?
Two thousand and five.
Since two thousand and five. So I believe what the board did at that time was made a concession and said, okay, since they haven't had an increase since two thousand and five, it's two thousand and fourteen, well, that's nine years, we will go ahead and give them a three percent increase, the same increase that we gave our employees. That has not changed, because typically, the elected officials', um, supplements are not subject to the county COLA. So that, that's how it was determined at that time. The, um, at the time, the legal department at that time brought forth a resolution to the board stating that we were gonna give the three percent increase because they hadn't gotten an increase in nine years. And they was only afraid to do that. So now move forward, it's two thousand and fourteen, we're six years later, that, that has been the same supplement since two thousand and fourteen.
Wow. And we just implemented a COLA, how many, um, years now for our employees?
Um, I think that we got a COLA every year since two thousand and fourteen, I believe.
So once again, the calculations, regardless of why, they were based upon a COLA, some type of a, um, calculation. But there hasn't been an adjustment since twenty fourteen. But the employees have received a COLA, which is wonderful, which is absolutely wonderful. But again, those who work directly for the folks have not had that adjustment. So again, I want to make sure that I'm hearing you correctly. When it comes to the supplement, which was previously calculated on the COLA, we can now look at that supplement as a board and all it is, is for us to come up with some type of, um, resolution. And I think, uh, Kim so eloquently stated earlier, that we just have to make sure that one does not continue to exist when another one takes that place, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
So if we're, now we're looking at six, a six-year, well, actually, oh my goodness, we're looking at a seven-year gap now that we've readjusted that, right? Cause it's twenty twenty-one, can we believe that?
Yeah, so.
And they set, when, when they do a resolution like that for supplements, they are set as a specific amount, they're not set, um, they're not set to be fluid. Like, we don't have to calculate anything for them, it's a set amount that's given to us. So if they want to redo it, they would redo it as a set, a new set amount, whatever that amount would be.
Right.
We don't have to calculate anything on that because that is set from that point forward for that specific position. No matter who is in that position, they receive that specific amount.
And, and, um, taking onto that, it, it's that the boards probably, if they want to make a change for a supplement, they can do so at any time, um, if they would like to. Um, and, you know, granted that we have the funding to do that.
And that's what we did in twenty fourteen.
Yeah, that's what we did.
Okay, one more point, but again, there's been like a seven-year gap, so we've established that. But one more quick point I got for you. Cause I do know that you stated too, that majority of these salaries, as we've seen with Cobb and Douglas, are set upon, based upon populace. But I'm looking at some data in front of me right now. And I'm looking at that one position, and we understand in, um, Augusta, and I, I don't know if you could pull up the population in Augusta. I was hoping to see more calculations being, you know, from the, uh, finance department and formulas. But at any rate, we got a hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars from the, from Augusta, just in, um, the, uh, I think this was a state position. And then in Fulton, it's a hundred and fifty-six for one state position. In Henry County, it's a hundred and twenty-five thousand, which we know they don't have more than we do in Clayton. But in Clayton, just this one salary is a hundred and seven thousand. So what I think that we probably need to do is an exercise of modeling, is let's go back and let's look at each one of those positions. Look at the population in each one of those. And as Kim so stated earlier, and let's look at those base salaries. And then we'll have concrete data for us to be able to digest as a board.
Okay, so Commissioner, we already have the, uh, population ACCG guide. The state minimum salary is based on a lot of those positions, is based on the population of those counties. Um, so the sheriff's office, I'm not sure which position you were referencing, but, um, the sheriff's office is based on, the base salary, state calculation, is based on population and then you add in the COLAs and the longevity and any supplements that the state said he's entitled to for, um, overseeing the courts or what have you. So I guess, if you, we can give you the calculation for each one of these positions, I'd be happy to share that with you. That's what's in this thick notebook right here that we have.
Yeah.
It shows so you can see exactly how it's calculated. But it is based on, um, the population on the majority of those when we had to do the comparison.
Well, I don't need the big book, um, but I do feel that, um, we, we're getting some contract. I'm getting some things that, again, and I'm just looking, I'm just doing research here. And I just want us to be able to look at the specific numbers, the specific data, that's simple as, as simple as that.
If you would send us what you're looking at, so I can compare it to what the state has given us, we'll be happy to compare it and show you what we're calculating based on what the state has given us.
Okay, so I'm asking you all to present that to us in numeric format.
Okay, I'll, I'll be happy, we'll copy this and give you all of the, um, every last one of these along with a copy of the ACCG guide, which has, it says you step by step, how to calculate it. Her sheet in here has a calculation based on ACCG guide. It's broken down by every last one of those, you can see it on there. And then it has a copy of the eighth House bill, if it's one that goes with that, and you can compare the two. And on her spreadsheet that she has, it shows that the state salary is this amount, the House bill is this amount, we're paying this amount. So I, we, she can send you a copy of all of these and, um, we can, um, PDF them and email them to you.
Thank you very much, thank y'all.
One, one last question, because we do need to move on. Uh, in the last seven years, have the constitutional elected officials, whether it was a state, um, law mandate, statute, whatever, been awarded any COLAs or pay raises within the last seven years?
Yes, sir, they have.
Okay.
Yes. They actually, they've even actually gotten COLAs when the county wasn't getting any COLAs. A lot of the state offices.
I'm clear, I'm clear, okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Kim.
All right, next up, we're gonna hear from, uh, Judge Pam Ferguson, uh, presentation from our probate court.
How are y'all doing?
Doing good, how are you?
All right, so, as you know, weapons carry permits fall in probate court.
Can y'all hear her?
Can you hear me?
Not clearly.
Do you want me to take my mic?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I'm only doing it cause you said so.
You are, okay. You got your temperature checked, right?
Do what?
Nothing, go ahead.
I'm doing my temperature, no, for you to know that. Okay, so, um, probate court handles weapons carry permits. And so we handle the applications, it's more than just an application. You start your, um, process online, um, we take the application, they fill out, um, some questions. They swear that, um, they, they're not a convicted felon, all those other things, don't have mental illness issues and so forth. And then it goes through a process. So it requires a lot more than just you getting a permit. And then, of course, we issue the permits. We actually issued today, my staff sent out three hundred and forty-four permits today. So my staff's really rocking on getting this done. Currently, in our present situation, we have a high demand for weapons carry permits. That's due to all kinds of reasons, um, you just turn on the news and that's why. So, um, a, a judge told me a while back that anytime people are afraid, they want that weapons carry permit. Um, I personally have never been involved or seen a time when more people are not afraid than they are right now for all kinds of reasons, so I'll just say that. So, um, I came before the board some time ago and I asked for some, um, overtime pay. I asked for some, um, ex, uh, part-time individuals. We reconfigured my courtroom, building maintenance came in and redid that. IT came in, gave us cameras for each station, um, we're very thankful for that. Communication got the word out, um, and of course, my staff, um, took care of having those permits and processing them. So that went from September to ended right before Thanksgiving. And that, um, due to that, um, award from the Board of Commissioners, we actually took in six thousand four hundred and twenty-six permits in twenty twenty. Now, that may not be a lot more than we did in twenty nineteen. It's like fifteen hundred, uh, more permits because in twenty nineteen, we did four thousand nine hundred and eleven permits. So it doesn't seem like it's that big of a difference, but it actually is. Because in March and April, we didn't issue any permits because, of course, we were, um, the state mandated that we not take, uh, permits due to the, um, what was involved in fingerprinting. And, um, as we stated, fingerprinting is probably the most contact involved that any clerks do. So, um, gaps is doing that. But the state mandated not to have permits during that time. Also, we're having to do the permits through appointments. So we cannot take more than twenty permits at a time. So the, the configuration that we put through in the courtroom allowed us to take, um, fifty or sixty a day. Um, so we ramped that up quite a bit. And it was a win-win for everybody. Because, um, the county, we actually took in, I estimate, about two thousand more permits. The county realizes twenty-two dollars for each of those permits. Um, it was good for us, for the probate court, because of course, um, we did what we were mandated to do. It was good for the applicants, cause they gotta wait for them to get their permits. Because at that time, the waiting ti- time was six to eight months out. Um, when we started that, um, the time that you could get a permit was, I think, June. Um, but we, we processed that, um, we told the people that did have appointments that they could come in, do walk-in. Um, and so we addressed that. Um, when we actually ran our numbers, um, as is usually the case, the numbers, we can't always hire all the people that we want to. You know, people resigned, people went on to, um, other places. So it was a win for everybody because a lot of those individuals got permanent positions, um, in other places around the county. Um, like I said, it was a win for the county because we realized about thirty thousand dollars because the actual part-time cost was six thousand nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars and seventy-four cents. The actual overtime cost was two thousand one hundred and fifty-nine and twenty-nine cents. We had budgeted in that, um, first phase, ten thousand dollars, but most of the things we actually used, um, IT was able to supply, um, without having to make actual purchases. So the county realized, um, thirty thousand dollars. So what we're asking to do now is to do another phase, um, and what we're asking for is three different things. We're asking for two additional part-time people. And what those individuals would help us, first of all, have more appointments. But once we get those two individuals trained, we could actually set times to have walk-ins again. Because walk-ins are a lot more efficient because we only have certain sp, certain numbers. And so even though today, you really, really, really want a permit, by March, you may not. And you just don't come in, and then we've lost an appointment. So having them on a walk-in basis would be a lot more productive. Um, we need the, um, overtime so that we can process these permits. Um, it does take a lot involved in processing them. I'm really asking for, uh, that to be done for the next six months. I think by July one, we'll get to a better place where we can process them with the staff that we have. Um, so that's two things we're asking for, two additional part-time people, which for a year would be twenty-four thousand four hundred and fifty. And for the next, um, five months to the next fiscal year, would be ten thousand six hundred and four dollars and sixteen cents. And then another issue that we have in the licensing department is we have a key employee that has been out for an extended period of time and it's expected that she will be out, um, through May. So it's, I'm sorry, um, through March. So we don't know when she's going to be back, so that's another thing we're asking for. She is actually paid as a court clerk senior, so we're asking for that replacement, a temporary full-time person to be hired, um, as a regular clerk, not as a court clerk senior. Um, and with the adjustment in what she hasn't received, um, that would be an actual cost to the county of six thousand thirty-eight, thirty-seven dollars and ninety-five cents. So those are the three things we're asking for, so we can continue to address this demand for the weapons carry permits. And I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions? Let me ask this, so I'm clear about your last request, the one that is out, the clerk that's out. And she's gonna be out.
She's gonna be out.
Is she accruing a salary currently?
Currently, she's not. She actually stopped receiving a salary in the end of October. I think she may have gotten Thanksgiving holiday pay, but aside from that, she hasn't been paid since October. And we would still have to hire that person, so we're still not using those funds. So it could be, even be a wash.
So that's my question, so is there another position that's vacant? Because obviously, we can't fill her position, cause she's still in it.
That's what I'm saying, that's what I'm asking for, is to-
For a new position.
You to create a temporary- You to create a temporary position that would end July one. That's what I'm asking for. Just as a regular clerk, and that'll help us, um, bridge that gap, so to speak. But, in the next budget cycle, we wouldn't have an additional person.
Regular clerk salary is, is less than what this person's making. Any questions? Thank you, ma'am.
All right.
What you give us, I know, I think you provided me with some information.
I did.
Provide some, that same information to the, to the commissioners.
Okay, I thought they already had it. Okay. Is there any other information that I can outline better, maybe that wasn't as clear?
I think really, the, the financial impact is what I would like to make sure that I see. And we, and if there's a way to offset those costs. And it may not be. But, at the bottom, at the end of the day, what's the bottom line financial impact to us?
Right, and what the part-time people will do is help us increase that twenty-two dollars for every permit that they take in.
So, you're bringing their money too, so that helps offset as well.
So, that's, that's where it becomes a wash.
Gotcha.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Judge. All right, MOU, Alzheimer's.
Good evening. Um, as we continue to enhance our program to ser, service delivery and senior services, we are looking to enter into a MOU with the Alzheimer's, Alzheimer's Association. And at the moment, Mia Chester is on the call to provide some valuable information to you guys about the importance and the benefits of us entering into a MOU agreement with the Alzheimer's Association to provide some services for our seniors and the community and our staff.
Ms. Chester, welcome. Is she on yet?
Thank you.
All right. Yes, you have the floor, ma'am.
All right, thank you so much for allowing me to speak tonight. As Tori said, the Alzheimer's Association is wanting to enter a two-year-long partnership with Clayton County Senior Services to provide, um, really valuable services for care partners, caregivers, and people living with dementia. So, a little bit about the Alzheimer's Association. We are a local nonprofit organization that provides caregiver support, programs to connect with research, as well as connecting people with, uh, community resources that they may be in need of. One core thing that the association does is to provide education to the community at large for those that may not know about dementia, or what it is for that matter, as well as to educate caregivers or care partners on your journey. One thing that we have learned throughout our time, um, connecting with caregivers is that people can serve, um, a really long time as the care partner, you know, um, from three to twenty years when a person has dementia. So, we thought it would be a really great idea to provide the education services with, in partnership with Clayton County, so that people aren't seeking services, um, through other organizations. We're coming to you guys and we want your county, um, your constituents to know that, uh, these services are available through senior services and that they are local. So, um, one of the things we were able to come up with through the partnership agreement is to agree on collaborating with Clayton County Senior Services to kind of determine any future needs to, to, um, address people living with dementia or Alzheimer's disease. So, we want to work on a needs assessment to, and, and have that to be ongoing, so that we can, um, create things that are going to be of value for the constituents. The other thing that we are presenting is a, um, community forum where we can hear those, uh, thoughts and, and needs from the community. It, all of this will be, uh, virtual that we are planning to do. And it will allow us to, again, look at what is, um, what are the gaps in Clayton County. So, with that, we are also planning to, um, would like to offer, uh, support groups throughout the county. And these support groups would be for caregivers or people living with early-stage Alzheimer's disease or dementia. Right now, the only, uh, support group that we have, um, that is an Alzheimer's Association support group is outside of Clayton County. So, we wanna just make sure that all, um, everyone is aware that they don't have to leave their county to get, um, the support they need through a support group. And so, we wanna work with the senior services to determine which areas might be most vital to host a support group meeting. Uh, the other two things on that agreement that we are proposing on would be ongoing community education through topics such as know the ten warning signs of Alzheimer's disease, to, um, understanding Alzheimer's disease. We have programs on effective communication strategies. And one of the most important ones is legal and financial planning for Alzheimer's, um, disease and dementia. These are programs that we know are beneficial to people, because oftentimes, family members don't really know where to start when a loved one is diagnosed with dementia. So, our education programs give them the basic knowledge they need to make informed decisions and then utilize the resources within their community. The final thing that we are proposing would be, um, a caregiver symposium that would be open to the community for family care partners and caregivers to, uh, come to a, a, a setting to learn about local and national support services and resources. And to hear from people that are either living with dementia, um, early-stage dementia, or to hear from caregivers or care partners. As I said, we are looking to pilot this, because we, um, have not done a, a partnership like this before with Clayton County Senior Services. We've always done educational programs here and there, but we wanted to let Clayton County Senior Services know that we are looking forward to providing these programs, um, for a, a long-term, um, or for long, for the long run. And so, we thought it would be vital to, to develop a two-year, um, plan to say, we're gonna give ourselves time to develop the support groups that we need, to offer the education, and to provide a caregiver symposium. So, that's basically what we would like to do. The programs that we offer are free of charge. And we, um, typically ask that, uh, people that are, attend our classes simply share the information, so there would be no cost to the county. And we're not really asking, um, much of the, or the attendees other than to share the information and help their neighbor, help, you know, a fellow, uh, a family member know that they don't have to go through this alone. And we're hoping to help spread the word through Clayton County Senior Services. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Ms. Chester?
Uh, yes, I have one, this is Pam Brick, I have one. Uh, yes, what's the difference, uh, between dementia and Alzheimer's?
Okay, great question. So, that's actually one that we get, um, all the time. And the best way to think about it is, um, if I were to ask you all to name the most popular flower you could think of, collectively, we would all say a rose. So, flowers would be a general category, and a rose would be the most common form. Dementia is a general category that describes problems with thought, mood, behavior, language, and judgment. And Alzheimer's disease is the most common form of dementia. So, sometimes when we go out to do education programs, just to show you, um, an example, people don't know the difference. And I've heard people say from time to time, well, my mom has, she has Alzheimer's but not dementia. Or they'll say she has a touch of dementia. And those are things that we want to correct and let people know that there is a difference. And there are things that you can do to be proactive about brain health, as well as respond to a loved one that has, um, a form of dementia.
So, so which, which one would be, um, I guess, more of a, an advanced stage, I guess you would call it?
Yeah, so, Alzheimer's is probably the, the, if we had to say what would be the most advanced, it would be Alzheimer's disease, because it is fatal, there isn't a cure for it. So, under that dementia umbrella, there are over seventy different types of dementia. Alzheimer's is just the most common one that it, that is fatal again. But there are ones that are related to, um, stroke or, or, um, hypertension. We have a, a, a form of dementia that is, um, related to Parkinson's disease. The, the thing to remember is that Alzheimer's is, disease is going to be the worst of those, just because there are no medications that will reverse the disease. And a person does, uh, expire or pass away from Alzheimer's.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Chester?
Uh huh.
This is Sona Gregory. Well, I guess it really, was really not directed to you, but I, I really like this program, because there are so many people, we know that dementia and Alzheimer's is a horrible disease. And there are people who just don't know where to go, and they're just at a loss with it. One time, I've even heard, I've had some constituents who actually moved to Florida, because they said, they moved from Georgia to Florida. And the reason they told me is because they said they have more support services. And this lady said her husband was going through the dementia, whatever, the Alzheimer's, and they actually moved. So, I really like this as a support service, because there are so many, um, people in this area, um, dealing with that. And, and, and one last question, are you from Decatur?
I am from Atlanta, I live in Decatur.
Gotcha, okay, okay, that name just sounds so familiar, sorry.
Any other questions? You have something else?
Um, yeah, there's one.
Yeah, I, I, I just agree with you, I just, sorry.
Go ahead.
No, you go ahead, Mia.
Okay, I was just gonna agree with her, that what we find is that when people don't know that these resources exist in their community, you know, there are situations where people are forced to, to seek other alternatives. And I think to, one of the, the goals of the program that I, that is, um, not stated in the agreement, but it is to keep people, um, at home for as long as possible. Um, so, to, to age in place. And I think having the resources that they need, um, while they are living with dementia allows them to be able to age in place and age in their own home, which is really, really important.
Tori?
And, um, there's one other component, after Mia and I talked, and Melissa and, and our staff, we talked about it. With the caregiver symposium, that's something that we're really excited about. But we understand that there may have to be a sponsorship, um, component to it. So, that will be added to the MOU for us to seek sponsorship opportunities to host a caregiver symposium. And then, there also may be some like fundraising opportunities for the Alzheimer's Association that will take place inside our senior centers. So, that language would be la, would be added to the MOU.
Gotcha.
I, I have a question, if you don't mind.
Ms. Franklin?
Um, so, understanding that this is affecting everybody, and I'm glad to hear that, well, many of our seniors, and not just our seniors, but the family members who are caring for them. We have the community block grants, and we're always giving out money to nonprofits through that. And, um, even some additional funding that sits over there that's given out at discre, discretion at times. Would this initiative not qualify for that type of, um, funding support?
You mean the partnership agreement or the caregiver symposium specifically?
In any way, however you wanna find, I'm not the subject matter expert to be able to find out.
Well, the Alzheimer's Association. They're not charging us a fee for their services. So, there isn't really any financial support that would be needed to enter into the partnership agreement with them. The most financial support would be for the caregiver symposium, because we're not just talking about a small event. If you think about Mayfest, you know, everyone knows us for Mayfest, and that's a really fun event, you know, for our department, and it's us honoring seniors. But, there are some really serious issues. So, you think about Mayfest on a large scale, but specifically for caregivers to come and get all the support and resources that they need, so they can take care of their family members. So, with that being said, we would definitely look for sponsorship opportunities to provide that for the community.
Right, and I'm not gonna take away from the sponsorship opportunities, I think that's a great opportunity, say opportunity twice. But, at any rate, we know that this is a dire need right now. And so, as opposed to waiting to garner the sponsorship specifically, um, I probably shouldn't even ask you this question, maybe those, um, within the county, like maybe, um, our CFO can answer, is there some funding available that is already geared towards this type of initiative that we could be able to utilize? Because again, we give this funding to nonprofits all the time. But this is something we're gonna see it utilized in a direct correlation with the service provider and with, I gotta tell you, y'all win awards all the time with senior services. So, just trying to think outside the box, so we can make it happen.
Can I just chime in on something with that, that, um, so.
I don't know.
This is one issue that Melissa and I both are dealing with and we're seeing. We have our Alzheimer's Service Center that sits right here in the heart of Clayton County, and it is struggling. I mean, we're trying our best to reach out and supplement and help. A R C has been very gracious to allow us to use some of our funding, um, to support those families. But, just as a person that kinda has my pulse on what's kinda going on with the senior population, if my recommendation has any kind of weight, I would make a strong recommendation if there's anything that we can do to support that facility as it relates to Alzheimer's, that would be a tremendous help to the people in our community. So, Mia, um, Alzheimer's Association, we've already began work there, but there's so much more work that needs to be done. And unfortunately, if something isn't done, we're gonna lose a very valuable program that we have in our county that no one else has. And I don't think any, I don't think people see the beauty of the county community that we have for seniors. So, we have our senior centers that are up, functioning, and thriving. And we get our seniors in there, and we keep them active. If they should decline in health, we have a continuum of services where they go to our aging program, right? So, they can go to our aging program, and they can get in-home services and all of that. But if you are a senior and you participate in our senior centers, and you should get Alzheimer's, there's nowhere for you to go, because we don't have that partnership with the Alzheimer's, um, s, um, service center here. If that was in place, that would mitigate a lot of the issues that we're finding with our patients and with, I mean, with our participants, who are headed, headed in that direction. So, that is just my opinion about where we are right now. And it really grieves me to see that that's going on, and it's nothing that I really physically can do to support that facility. I know that's more than what you asked.
No, it's great, thank you.
And I tell you, you're very passionate about that.
I, I agree with you, is, you know, that with this Alzheimer's center over there. But, um, my question is, is that center still servicing, you know, um, all areas, and, and not just Clayton? And, you know, if, if they are, you know, can we just try to make a tri-county thing or whatever? Just ask it.
I don't know what the, I don't know what the parameters are in the, in, in, in the stipulations are as it relates to who that center serves. But I do understand and know from working with Melissa when she was the executive director, is that we can, we can paint the picture, and it could be all Clayton County residents. The issue is, they don't have the funding. So, they're taking whoever will participate, so they can receive the funding to operate the program. But if we adopted the program, and we took some ownership with the program, we have, I hate to say a feeder pro, a feeder program, but basically, we have seniors who we can identify in our senior centers that can move directly over there. Um, and there could be a lot of resource sharing between our department and that facility. In my own perfect world, and I probably shouldn't say that, it seems like a natural fit for senior services, for us all to be one big family and to continue to provide valuable services to our caregivers, to our seniors who have Alzheimer's or dementia. And we have Mia, who is more than willing with the Alzheimer's Association to provide whatever resources we need to make that happen. It could be a beautiful partnership, if that was a part of senior services. I don't know how to make that happen, I don't know how to connect the dots. But to your question, Commissioner Gregory, it could easily be full of all Clayton County seniors, easily.
And I agree with you, Ms. Tanks, and, and that would be good. And I know we have seniors utilizing the senior centers, you know, from other areas too. And that's not my big thing, it's just that, you know, thinking in terms of, you know, when you're dealing with Alzheimer's and dementia, it's such a costly thing. And I just wanted to make sure, you know, as far as Clayton, and, and I care about all people wherever you live. I don't care if you got dementia and fad and wherever, but at the same time, we still, I just wanted to make sure we were getting our part. And, and you're so right, and I definitely, you know a lot more about this stuff than me. And I, I, I appreciate you clarifying that, and I see where you're going with it, and I think it's great. think it's great.
Thank you.
And let me just say, we do provide a general assistance grant to Alzheimer's and I agree, it's not enough, uh, even to the fact where Commissioner Davis and myself have, we visit the place quite often, but we have, uh, talked about planning a fundraiser for the center because we realize the fact that there's not enough funds going through there and they provide a tremendous, uh, service to this community. Uh, and I think over the years, it has came down from what we used to provide to them for that very reason that Commissioner Gregory brought up about the, I think it was her, the, uh, outside counties sending people in, uh, to use the facility. So that might be some, definitely something we need to look at in terms of if we're gonna provide it for, for Clayton County citizens to increase the amount of money we give.
Is there anything that I need to provide, to work on, to provide to the board, to paint the whole story about, um, what's happening at the, at the center or anything that I can?
Well, we're, I think we're open, I think everybody hears what you're saying and share your concerns, I think any information that you can provide this board for us to make a determination on what direction we as a board would like to go in, I think we welcome all information. So, and then also what parameters would, or what would be needed to require this center to only accept Clayton County citizens?
Okay, I will work on it.
With, with all due respect, before I lose this thought, it may be relevant, maybe not, but at least we'll get it on record. Commissioner Gregory, that was the great point that you brought up and, I'm sorry, Madam Vice Chair Gregory now, great point that you brought up. Um, I've actually been having conversations in the past about some other things, um, with the local jurisdictions, um, of other leaders that I've just, we all served with. One, Commissioner Russo, um, he, he alluded to opportunities for us to work together and I know you all know him, and then also we know that Henry County has had some changes and they've alluded to working together more from a regional perspective and that's why I wanted to give you kudos, um, uh, Commissioner Gregory, because that is a more regionalistic thought process and I think that's going to be, uh, more feasible for us because the one thing we have to bear in mind is where we're concerning ourselves about who is coming into the facility, which you're exactly right about, but we have to remember that Alzheimer's does not just affect those who are residents, we have those that are residents in our community that I know of personally, who are having to care for parents to, uh, that are needing to come into the community because they're needing to come close to, um, to their family. So, perfect example even with me personally, mom lived in Henry, I'm in Clayton, but I had to go help her, so if we can look and explore on that more regionalistic approach to it, I believe you'll find some, um, great support from even A R C, I know like even in the, um, tri, I think it's the equivalent to A R C, but it's tri something down in the Coweta County area, they're working from a regional, regional standpoint to really solve a lot of these issues and concerns, so I just wanted us to keep that in mind before we move forward. And then if we do stick to, just it needs to be the resident or where our funding goes, it looks like with senior services, we have something in place to where we extend a different cost for services for those who live in the county versus those who don't. So that was just a couple of points I just didn't want us forget as we continue this conversation at a later date.
And those are good points, but also the A R C is when we pulled the funding from Alzheimer's Center, correct?
I'm sorry.
A R C pulled funding from there, I think they down, they, they cut back.
So, yes, that, that was a sticky issue, A R C did pull funding from that program, um, but they have recently allowed us to share a pot of Alzheimer's service money, which is not a lot of money, but they have, um, rec- recently approved for us to reach out to the Alzheimer's Service Center to provide some support to those, um, participants at the center, but they did pull out of that program.
And let's dig in deep to why, because we can't stick with the subject matter of why, what they've done, let's find out why and let's work together to see if we can get to a better space.
They pulled it out throughout the state, that wasn't just our center.
Yeah.
It was.
But, but thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for the presentation, Ms. Chester, thank you, thank you for all that you're doing in this area.
Thank you, thank you Mia.
And please just, uh, provide that information to us. All right, next up is, uh, Mr. Egeke, sign.
Chairman, Vice and Commissioners, good evening. I'm back again about the signs. Uh, the last time we met about signs and it was approved, but, uh, the Commissioners wanted us to see an example of, uh, the sign, actually print it out and create it, so this is, I'm not sure how this.
It's upside down, number one.
I, I'm not sure how this will be seen on the camera, but I'm gonna stand right here.
We can see it.
Oh, okay.
It's a two-sided.
What we have.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
This is what we have and it's double-sided also, that you can have it double-sided and, um, so this is the corrections, um, the Commissioners asked for, that we did and it's double-sided, uh, we really need to replace our signs.
Are we, are we ready to move forward with?
That's why I'm here this evening, to get the green light from the Board to move forward. The signs that are out there negate what we are preaching, they are atrocious, uh, they don't look good at all, so, um, one of my briefest presentations.
You're not finished yet, apparently.
Is this, I need the, I, I need the, uh, permission to go ahead and order the signs, we really need it.
Well, of course, we can't vote on anything, uh, in this session, but did each, did you send that out to each Commissioner in terms of the way it looks? And if they had any concerns? I, I, the last time we spoke, I think Commissioner Hambrick, only concern was it needed to be two-sided.
And it's two-sided and also we, yeah, it wasn't approved, except I wanted to see the.
The finished product.
Yeah, the finished product, yeah.
So, are, is everybody good with what you're seeing?
I can't, I can't.
Go ahead, Commissioner Gregory.
Okay, uh, Mr. Egeke, I just wanted to say, I don't have a problem with that sign, but whoever is putting up the signs, they are gonna have to do a better job because, uh, there are some signs out now that are just leaning, they're just laying on the ground, so that's my concern, I don't know who, who is the consultant or who puts up the signs, but we need to do better than that.
And that is essentially why I'm here. What you're seeing leaning, looking crazy, it's the materials that are holding up the sign have lived their shelf life.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Commissioner Hambrick, you have something?
Uh, yes, uh huh. Now, I can't see it from here, but I hope those signs are, uh, ones that you can see when you're driving, that, that's my thing, is, is, um, is it, is it gonna be dark enough or whatever? And it looks as if.
It's, it's white and, um, it can be seen while one is driving, it's not a billboard, it's what other counties use, use and, um, so it's, um, it can be seen, it's clear to see.
Is it a fill-in, uh, Mr. Egeke? I mean, do you fill in the date and all handwritten or is it, uh, some kind of label you're gonna put on there?
This tile gonna be labeled, we're gonna print the labels, so the one we have right now is handwritten, so you had mercy of the handwriting of who is doing it sometimes, but there's gonna be, um, kind of croy machine type labeling, so it, it will be readable.
So it's labeling?
Yeah.
Any other questions?
No, I, Mr. J.
Commissioner Franklin.
I'm sorry, somebody's talking.
Commissioner Franklin, go ahead.
I know, Mr. Egeke, you tired of these signs by now, but listen, only thing I will say is I was waiting on Commissioner Hambrick to say it, 'cause I, I do wear glasses once in a while and I just think that the space at the top is still not utilized to the best for those to be able to read it, that's the only thing I will say. We got a whole lot of space with the, um, with the logo, which is, you know, we know it's Clayton County, that's wonderful, but I, I just, that red part is just still not quite bold enough and that's the only thing I would say, but at the end of the day, if everybody's good with it, if they like it, I love it.
If, if.
Mr. Egeke, you should let, you should let Tina and I design your sign.
Okay.
No, no, we have to put on my payroll there.
If.
Oh, they are.
What was that?
If we, if we make the text any bigger than this, it will not be this size.
Okay, i- i- if, if, I, I, I didn't hear you now, if we do what now?
If, if the text, the font that we are using for this, it's bigger than it is right here, the signs will not be this size.
So what?
If it's bigger than this.
So what he's saying is the signs will be a little bigger and the labeling, and the labeling will be, the, the font on it will be larger and more visible.
Yeah, see, the sign, the sign looks large enough, it's just that when I'm driving, when I, when I'm making signs for my district, I, I think of driving and, and I want people, people to be able to see as much as possible where they don't have to stop or go back around and review it, I think I said that before, but, uh, it's, I guess it's according to how your labels are gonna look on there because, uh, I, I just hope it's larger, I just can't see it now and I have on my glasses.
We're gonna continue to increase the level as the space allows us because we control the size to see, they're not gonna be this small, this is your presentation, but the idea is we have reduced the amount of information to the point where if we take off any more information, it will not be a zoning sign that is designed for public participation, so we have to pay attention to that part of it too.
And we can always readjust it down the road.
Yes.
Pretty much, the only comment I have is, could we possibly just, and it goes to a little bit, there's so much white space at the top, can we take the logo, left justify it and then just make the, the meeting name, the first line, just make that double the size or whatever, even if it goes on two lines, even if it were moved over, but if we left, if we left justify that logo in a space and even make that even smaller if we need to, uh, people, people pretty much know we're in Clayton County, but, uh, left justify, I think it will give us a lot more, uh, we can utilize a lot more space without increasing the sign of the, the size of the sign.
Commissioner, thank you, uh, uh, I beg your indulgence, we did this before, came to the presentation, we were asked to take it back to, not to do that, that's how we got started, to left justify it and handle it that way and we went back to communication, send them the start, the communication channel to make sure we are consistent with our branding and this is what we came up with, but I am willing to go back to them.
I don't quite understand what the branding has to do with having, making it in the center but.
I, I agree, I agree with that. Can it, for, I don't wanna be out of order, but is Chuck there, can we vote to go out there and let Tina and him do this sign? Perhaps, Commissioner Gregory, I mean, Hambrick offered.
Okay.
No, no, let's, let's try, let's try these, let's try these and see, because I, I'm, I'm sure my view from here isn't clear enough to make a decision, but if we see them and let's try them for so many months and if that doesn't work, I mean, I, uh, Tina and I will off our services.
I agree to try them because people will give feedback and if there's negative feedback, then we go from there.
Exactly.
Absolutely, we've been at this for a while, we need to, we need to move forward because the signs that are out there are looking bad.
I had some vote signs out and people loved them.
All right, everybody good on this? All right, thank you, Mr. Egeke.
Okay, thank you.
All right, last presentation, Mr. Reed, Code of Conduct.
Good evening again, I am going to go over, um, a little faster because this is largely what I went over in, uh, December, but kind of give you an overview of what the current version of the code of conduct that's, um, on the agenda for the 19th. Again, there's an issue relating to, um, decorum, basically saying that you have to conduct yourself in a professional and respectful manner, this is the same slide that was provided, uh, to the Board, um, based on the last one, um, you can see the, the information that's relating to decorum there. Um, the, the conduct during meetings is basically four things that, uh, you have to, can't speak first without being recognized by the Chair, cannot interrupt anyone who goes to floor, use profanity or refuse to yield the floor or argue with the Chair if the Commissioners rule out of order. There's, uh, additional things here about making disparaging comments about character, confronting anyone about a prior statement, there, the language is much more detailed in the ordinance, but this is a summary of what the content is. State during a public portion that a county employee has not done his or her job or has not done his or her job properly, represent their personal position or beliefs, has been the position or beliefs of the Board as a whole, uh, refuse to recognize the validity of action approved by majority of vote or divulge any confidential information. This revised, uh, code of conduct basically says that the, uh, member of the Board of Commissioners shall not publicly state they intend to fire or discipline any county employee, reprimand any county employee, use profanity, insulting or demeaning words, call into question qualifications or competency of county employees, demand that the Chief Operating Officer or any department head stop what he or she is doing and immediately attend to the Commissioners' business, uh, promise, uh, to pass any ordinance, agree to buy anything of value without advance approval or attempt to negotiate business, uh, without the advance approval of the majority of the Board of Commissioners. Uh, what changed from the December meeting was, um, well, the first two points, the first point was in the December meeting, which was, um, prior or other county code of conduct had a provision where it prohibited or, or, uh, it prevented members of their Boards from speaking to the news media without advance approval, that was taken out, uh, just based on our culture here. Also, uh, the December version said unless directed by a majority of vote of the Board of Commissioners, previous direction by the Chief Operating Officer or exigency relating to an issue in the Commissioners' District, then it listed all the other things I just read. And then I also removed that prohibition from speaking to employees directly based on comments that were made, uh, at that, uh, meeting. So there is right now no prohibition from any Board member speaking to a department head or, uh, employee about issues that arise in your district or anything that you need to, um, uh, anything you need to, um, do as far as your, uh, district or otherwise. Uh, again, the penalty issue is not, uh, hasn't changed, um, that, uh, you could decide whether, that one of the Commissioners or one of you all have, um, violated that code of conduct and it still gives the same, uh, list of penalties, this verbal censure, written censure, removal from any committee, association, authority or group in which the Commissioner is involved in this, in their capacity as a Clayton County Commissioner, again, um, you know, homeowners association or some other group that you're in that's not where you were appointed by, uh, you know, by the, um, Board, that doesn't involve that, but if there was a member that you were appointed to, uh, by virtue of, um, your role as a Clayton County Commissioner, then that is an option. Also a fine, not to exceed $500 per offense, um, and to be paid within 10 days of the vote. Again, in what was present from other counties, added text to include authority and also added language, um, that stated it's only applied if the Board of Commissioners appointed or authorized the appointment of the Commissioner to that committee, association, authority or group in question. So that's a very high-level, um, overview of what was the difference between the December code of conduct and the one that's presently on the agenda for this upcoming meeting. And I, I'm open to any questions or comments or concerns.
All right, questions?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair, uh, Mr. Reed, would you mind going back to those things that you removed? I do apologize, but my captain called me looking at issue in the district while you were at that park.
Sure, um. Okay, so I removed, uh, again, the first bullet point was from, uh, was already not in the December one, which was looking at the, um, models that came from other jurisdictions, they had something in there that prohibited Commissioners from speaking to the news media unless they had advance approval by the Board. unless they had advance approval by the board. I took that out. That wasn't in any of your versions. But then the language, the, the next two bullet points were in the previous version, which was unless directed by a majority vote of the board of commissioners, previous direction by the chief operating officer or an exigency relating to an issue in, in the commissioner's district. That qualifying language was in the December version before we dealt with, you know, talking with other um, department heads and et cetera, et cetera, the other eight things that were in these other um, or nine at that point. Reproman a county employee, use, I'm sorry. Yes. Reproman a county employee, discuss or call into question qualifications or competency, those things, these eight bullets. The previous version had that qualifying language before.
Okay.
And then I took that out because really the only thing that that really pertained to was the speaking to um, employees directly. And so all the other stuff really doesn't really come into play with that. So, and so I took out the information about having uh, prohibiting the board from speaking to department heads or other employees uh, generally about things that you have to have done in your districts.
Okay, thank you. Um, I have one other question, Mr. Chair. Well, not really a question, but I just wanted to bring this up. I mean, in the past, we had an unwritten rule that a public comment, you know, we didn't try to solve the problems there. Because we all give so much of our time like meeting with people. Um, we all have these designated times to um, that we do meet with people, whatever individually or um, collectively when we meet with citizens. I would like to um, just poll the board about how you feel about that because it's so hard to correct a, a problem in public comment. I mean, a lot of times we'll have department directors there and they may not have everything they need to resolve the problem or they can't think of it, uh, just don't come up in their head just right there. And that seemed to me to work out pretty good. Uh, you know, if we just said, well, you know, we will get with you on that issue or um, that your commissioner, you know, will contact you or that commissioner contacted so forth.
I'm not sure what you're asking in that respect, uh, Commissioner Gregory.
Asking that, we go back to that rule.
Adopt a policy that says we are not gonna respond to citizens' requests or, or uh, questions during, during public comment?
Not res- not responding at that time during public comment. But, you know, make it um, you know, of course, we all gonna get with them. You know, if there's in our district or whatever, or either we have already got with them. Uh, but just trying to resolve problems in public comment, you know, can lead to, you know, some of these conduct issues or whatever. And I'm.
Oh, yeah, Commissioner Hammer.
Oh, and I think sometime the chairman does that anyway. He'll say, uh, uh, the chief will get with you or uh, the commissioner from that district will get with you. I like that better too than trying to answer or resolve the issue right then and there.
Right.
All right, duly noted, and that's something we probably can have further discussion on.
I have a quick question.
Hold on a second, Commissioner.
I'm sorry, I did see the point about not speaking over anybody, but it's kinda hard. There's no buzzer. There's no means of how we're supposed to ask for permission, just saying, but um, but my question is, when we talk about getting with the commissioner, as you just stated, Commissioner Gregory, I'm not understanding if it's operations, then as commissioners, we do communicate with our constituents on a regular basis. I know all of us do that. Um, do, you all of us do that. But at the end of the day, for me, it's very um, interesting for us to be able to delineate saying they're gonna get with the commissioner when it may be an operations issue. We've even had in the past to where we, I've received um, communications from other areas dealing with operations. So I'm a little bit fuzzy, but you know, this, this is only my second term, so maybe I'm missing something. So maybe, Mr. Reed.
Well, let me say this, there's no issue if it's.
Can't use that anymore.
Yeah, hold on a second. There's, there's no issue. Yeah, that's right. Uh, there's no issue if it's operational for us to be directed to handle those, to handle those complaints.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. I ain't trying to talk over you. Don't try to find me now.
Not yet, not yet, no. All right, like I was saying, if it's operational, there's never been a problem where I've directed the chief of police or anybody else to look into that matter. But cit- as citizens, if they wanna speak to their commissioner, then they have every right to ask of that. Uh, I would never tell a, a citizen that they can't speak their, their, to their commissioner simply because it's operational. But I will let them know that yes, somebody from that department would get back to them. So I understand where you're coming from, but I wanna make sure that those people who elected you in your, each of your respective uh, districts are able to uh, talk to their district commissioner if they so choose.
Right. Because they come to us because they don't know who handles, they don't know if Mr. E.G.K. is handling permits, he's over permits. So they come to us with that. So um, again, you know, even though it's operational, if someone comes in, I don't have my business license, right, you know, whatever. Even though that's operational, we can still just say, you know, someone will get with you. And if that's your, that's your constituent, you know, I, I think myself, I wanna give him a call, you know, and let him know and call Mr. E.G.K., make sure he take care of him, that kinda thing.
Right, right. And I think that, that this allows, allows that to be done as a follow-up.
The, Chairman, the only thing I'd like to add to that is that we just wanna be careful and cognizant that the constituents are not feeling like we're not listening to them. So I, that's the only thing I'd like to say about that. We wanna make sure that we're very respectful and they understand that we are listening to them. But we are not going to, but I understand Commissioner, since we're not, we, their issue right there, but we can begin to direct to the appropriate position, which you've done. I think you've done a great job of.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Before.
Commissioner Hammer.
Is someone talking?
Commissioner Hammer, go ahead.
Oh, okay. Before I go to what, how I really feel about this, uh, I do wanna go to the penalties. Uh, it was something about taking, taking me off of a board and taking me out of, off of an authority and how is that? I, I'm not clear on that. And also on this uh, $500. Is that legal?
So here, let me um, let me slow down because I recognize that I kind of went over that pretty fast. What this would do is if you all have the responsibility to police yourself. And so if one of you felt that there was a violation of this code of conduct, you could bring that to the attention of the full board. It would go into executive session. You all will be dis- discuss that in the executive session. And if you felt that if there was uh, some violation, you could not decide that in executive session. It would have to be taken out. The, the vote would have to be taken out in public. And then if you voted to say that someone violated the code of conduct, you could impose a penalty. You don't have to, but you can. The options, if you wanted to impose a penalty, therefore, that is, it just could be a simple verbal censure, meaning that um, the chair would say, um, you know, Commissioner, so and so violated this particular code section and we're saying that they should not do that again or something to that effect. The other could be a written censure, mainly basically writing down that this is what happened. These are kind of the minutes. Here are the facts that outline the violation. That may, that probably would not occur at that meeting because it'd have to be written. It'd probably come back at a later meeting. Depending on what the facts were, it also allows removal from a com- uh, committee, association, authority or group uh, in which the commissioner is involved in their capacity as a Clayton County Commissioner. So so, say for instance, you were appointed to a particular authority or a particular group. If the circumstances warranted, you could be removed from that authority or group depending on the facts. Then there's also the option of a fine. But that fa- that's not required, but if so, it's a fine not to exceed $500. And then it gives that offending commissioner 10 days of the board's vote to pay it. And if not, then it would be withheld from uh, that commissioner's compensation.
Oh, really?
Those are the, those are the, those are the four options. Now again, all of that is subject to your, to the um, vote of this board. You can change that amount, you can take that out, whatever this board decides on what you wanna do as far as uh, how you wanna govern yourself. Obviously, a, a fine um, signals how serious you all are taking this. Uh, and this, this language does come from other um, jurisdictions. So this amount was not just picked out of, out of random, other than whatever, you know, other jurisdictions have, have done. So this language is from uh, another jurisdiction that, that put a fine and amount in their code of conduct.
Yeah, and we looked at best practices from around the state, and this is how we came up with this language for this code of conduct. But just a point of clarity in terms of the boards and the board removal. So if this board appointed, let's say, say Commissioner Davis to the housing authority board, then we would be able to move, remove him as a penalty from that board. But if this board does not appoint you to other boards, then we would not have the authority to do that.
Correct.
I have a question. Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to talk over anybody.
Go ahead, uh, Commissioner Franklin.
Who, you said we. Who came up with this again? Cause I don't remember this being done in like a um, we didn't do a retreat this year. We did a retreat, how many years ago you all? How many years has been since we did a retreat?
Two.
Two years?
Maybe three.
Okay. Three, three.
Well, well, the first, the first year, um, I think the first year, uh, Commissioner Davis came on board, I believe.
That's, that's true.
It was excellent too. I remember there was a lot of cohesiveness, great communication. I remember that. So question for you, who came, I said, the term was utilized, we. So where did this come from?
Okay, Commissioner Da- uh, I'm sorry, Franklin. As you well know, as you well know, as you well know, any commissioner can bring up or request any kind of resolution or uh, direction that they wanna bring forth to board of commissioners. I felt that it's in our, our best interest, looking at best practices as a term that you use quite often, to find a way that we can police ourselves. And I believe Commissioner Gregory said it best. We hold other folks accountable. It's time for us to hold ourselves accountable. But I looked around at code of conduct to make sure that we are conducting ourselves in a responsible and logical way. And I asked Mr. Reed to research it. And he came up with a number of uh, codes of conduct from other counties and cities. And I advised him to bring it before this board in a work session.
Okay.
So we can evaluate it and uh, we have made amendments and deletions to it based on some of commissioners' uh, comments. And that's where we are right now. And I fully expect to put this on the uh, agenda for a vote.
Okay. So, and I, and I apologize because I had a family emergency last time, but so you did it, Mr. Chairman, and then so it was originally suggested that the board, we haven't had a uh, retreat, but the board could only speak to the COO. I got you. I'm good. I'm with you.
I'm not clear where you're going with that, but I'm cl- okay.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I'm not good.
Okay, wh- what's your concern, Commissioner?
Okay. Now, do I have the floor? I don't know.
Yes, Commissioner Hammer, go ahead.
Oh, okay. When we become commissioners, we have commissioner training that we go to uh, throughout the year, ACCG put on different trainings and all that we go to. And I think we have something on record now uh, as to duties and responsibilities of uh, of a commissioner. Um, we also have, uh, I mean, we have things in place. I'm not comfortable boxing myself in to something that I may end up violating and all, not intentionally. But, but to put this in writing, I'm not comfortable doing that. Uh, I don't know how everybody else feels. That's okay, whatever. But I, I don't feel comfortable doing that. And I, I just don't want to box myself in as whatever. Cause like I say, if, if I violate any of these things that you, we have discussed tonight, it would definitely not be intentionally. And for that to happen, and then all of a sudden you charging me $500, which you won't get cause I don't have it, but um, I, I, I'm definitely.
It would take a lot.
And we also have uh, uh, we have different, wait, we have what, ethics board and all this. So while this policing and all, I mean, I wanna be comfortable doing my job for the people. And with all these restrictions, I, I just don't see that happening comfortably. And all, so I, I think personally, I'd rather think on this for a while and, and maybe even check with some other counties or whatever and all. And I appreciate you um, attorney Chuck, uh, for bringing this to us and, and all. But right now, I'm not comfortable with it. And I know you say you're gonna have it on the agenda for next week, but I just want to let you know how I feel right now.
And we appreciate your comments, uh, Commissioner. Just like we have state laws and ordinances that we must abide by. And, you know, people violate those, people not only violate them, but they're still held to, there's consequences to every act, rea- uh, consequences to everybody's actions. So this just helps us to know what the rules are so you won't be violating. So you won't overstep boundaries, none of us. And that we have a clear cut direction as to how to conduct ourselves in and out of meetings. And that's basically all it is. Uh, other counties have been operating under a code of conduct with apparently no problems. So I don't see why there would be a problem with us having such a, a code of conduct under our belt as well.
Well, and I think, you know, we're all adults and, and I think we operate that way. Uh, not only personally because of ourselves, but for the people we represent also and all. And again, I think it's just boxing. I, I feel like this now. This is just my personal opinion that, uh, I don't wanna box myself in. I'm not gonna leave you there on that one, Commissioner. I'm gonna agree with you on it. Um, I have done some extensive research and other jurisdictions simply adopt the Roberts rules of order. Um, the one thing I will say about all of this, which is why I brought it out, about communication. In any relationship, whether elected, not elected, in a family relationship, communication is the key. And so commu- when communication is strained, there are times that it may show up in different ways. And so I agree with you, Commissioner Hammer, because it's all about us communicating with one another, all of us being aware so that we can make the best decisions for our county, whether it's in our individual capacity and that vote is just our vote, but we have to be knowledgeable of what's going on. It has to be a two-way communication. So that's why I brought up the fact about the, when is the last time we had a retreat? So um, I just concur with you, Commissioner Hammer. That's all I wanted to tell you. And thank you, Mr. Reed, for your work. Um, and um, the last thing is I think Roberts rule of order will be able to address some of these things. But at the end of the day, it's all about the majority of this board. And I believe all of us have a will with the people at our heart, no matter what. So.
Okay, the only thing I'm gonna add at the end of that uh, for the present, for what will be presented. There seems to be concern about the $500. How about removing that out of there? And then we'll go from there.
Can I add something, Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Even at the state level, our state senators have a code of conduct, a written code of conduct. And a, also a, a chamber etiquette. So I guess the question becomes, what makes us differ that we should not have one? It's not about, to me, it's not about communication. It's just about having something in writing of how we should carry ourselves. Period.
Okay, see now, I differ with you, uh, Commissioner Davis, uh, on that. But I mean, am I out of order? Uh, would I be violating this new code of conduct because I differ with you on that? Um, so I, 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 again, the boxing in is, is what I'm concerned about.
A, a difference of opinion is not about the conduct here. It's how we begin to speak to each other.
Exactly.
Which would be the violation or how we would carry ourselves. There, there in line is the conduct rules. For me to jump on you and start calling you names because we don't agree, yeah, we've got, that's, that's an issue there. Which I should be reprimanded for if I were to do something like that. So I, I don't, there's nothing about being uh, disagreeing with, with a colleague. So I, I don't, there's nothing about being disagreeing with, with a colleague. I don't think that, that's not the issue that we're speaking about.
And then I go back to what, and we can go on with this, but I'll go back to what, Commissioner, is it Franklin now?
Yes, ma'am. It's just Franklin.
Communication. I mean, and communication is the key, and I think we, if, if we don't know how, and I think we do know how to work together and respect each other and all, and, and I, I think that's, right now, that's what we need. I mean, if, if things seem to get out of hand or whatever, and maybe somewhere down the road, we say, okay, this can't be handled, we can't talk this out, or we can't communicate in the way we want to, then consider this, what, code of conduct or whatever. But again, right now, it's strictly my opinion, and like you say, you're going to put it on the agenda for next week, and, and we'll just, you know, see where it goes.
Absolutely. All right. Anything else?
Are we going to stick with that little thing about not answering, you know, in public comment? I mean, used to part of the little...
That's not part of the code of conduct. I think, since I'm presiding over the board, I will try to take that into consideration as I address the, the citizen when they come up to speak. So I, I will, like I said, try to direct those comments in, in the way that you recommend.
Well, we used to, like, the clerk used to read a little statement like she does, and part of her statement was, no one from the board will answer your question, but someone will get back with you, so forth, so forth.
Well, I think if we do that, I think citizens will feel like we're not, that we don't care what they're saying. I think that would put a negative connotation on their, their ability to come up, not ability, but for them to come up and speak before us, because their expectation, on a lot of them, is that we're going to respond back to them in some form or fashion, and sometimes we don't at all. Sometimes the citizens are simply making a statement, but I, I think we need to play that by ear. But if the majority wants to have the clerk to read a statement, then, you know, we can entertain that thought as well.
Thank you.
All right. All right, if there's nothing else, we stand adjourned. Thank you.